We'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to anybody who's joining us remotely, and we begin as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I am going to make the motion for the consent agenda because we made a slight change. So I've moved to approve the consent agenda, amending the agenda to move the 3A renewal discussion to the regular session under public interest items for discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Almaza. Missy, any comments or discussion? The consent agenda is items of routine and non-controversial nature placed to allow the Board of Education to focus on other items contained in lengthy agenda. They could also be removed if we have any concerns. Anybody? Missy?
I do apologize if my mic isn't working, so I'm going to speak really loudly or loudly for me anyway. Mr. Almaza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Excellent. We have no public participation this evening, either in person or submitted via the email format that we've been using for the last months. And we appreciate the public very much, but we're going to just move right along, and I think that hopefully that's a good sign. We always say no news is good news. So we did have feedback from multiple sources thanking us for our comprehensive back-to-school plan. So maybe that's why there's nobody here to chime in tonight, but we do have a lot of good stuff we're going to cover this evening, and we appreciate everybody who's tuning in. We begin with the report of the Superintendent, Superintendent Qualman. I'll turn it over to you.
All right, let me trade you out. I'll use this one. Thank you. So to our audience this evening, thank you for tuning in. This is our first board meeting that we are utilizing Zoom as our electronic distribution method. We did think it was important that we bring the team back together in the boardroom. We are expecting students and teachers back in classrooms on August 25th, so we think it's important that we come back too and demonstrate a willingness to work together. It's been great to see people's faces and be in the same room together and have some laughs and share dinner. And we also really appreciate all the public participation that we've had in the last few months, even though we've been remote. We've had more people tuned in online than we have had present at any board meeting that I've been to in many years. So we wanted to keep that engagement, so that's why we're really doing both now. We've got an online version available so people can tune in, but we're here in person, so trying to bring the best of both worlds, as I think our teachers and students are about to set off on as well. So let me jump into the report. Can we jump to the next slide, please? The next slide's going to show some of the recent activities I've been engaged in. So Ad Team Retreat on July 31st, welcomed back all our principals, district directors, assistant principals, deans. And then Teacher Leader Institute was August 5th and 6th. Today, we held mandatory trainings for all staff members, and tomorrow is our big welcome-back day with Educator Academy. I do want to share three main themes that I've been echoing at these different meetings. The three themes, number one, consistency. Last year, we set in our strategic plan priorities of focusing on hearts and minds, and I think that that has more relevance this year than it ever has. Coming into this school year, we're going to have kids coming back with all kinds of different needs, and many of them are going to be academic, and many of them are going to be social-emotional, so we need to be mindful of that, and our teachers have been engaged in trainings all summer to prepare for that, and I'm really happy that they were willing to spend their time doing that. So hearts and minds, we are interpreting through equity and through work with systems of support, so we'll continue to hold that focus for this school year and provide continuity in a time of dramatic changes. The second theme that I want to emphasize is resetting expectations. If we come into this school year expecting it to be a normal school year, we're going to be disappointed. So there's a psychological theory known as a happiness set point, and happiness set point is the place in your personal life that you find your kind of stasis, your general happiness set point. And it fluctuates a little bit through your life as you have times of turmoil and challenge, but I would argue that as a society, our happiness set point has been forced down. We are under extreme duress right now. We have lots of challenges. As I sit in a smoky room and I look at an orange haze outside, not only are we facing a pandemic, but we've got fires and smoke, and there's so many changes happening in our lives right now, and we have to be prepared to accept that things are going to be different. We have to accept that we are losing some of the control and predictability that we normally have in our school schedules and our lives, and we've got to embrace this challenge. We have to accept that it's going to be an odd year and be flexible, be fluid, and adapt to changes. And if we can get our minds and our hearts wrapped around that expectation, this whole year will be much easier for all of us. So I'm trying to get teachers and principals and parents and students to just accept we're going to have a different set of expectations this year, still maintaining our focus on hearts and minds. The third key theme is clarity of purpose. We're an educational organization, so our charge this year is as easy as it has ever been in that we take care of kids. Still challenging, we've got plenty of challenges ahead of us, but remember that we're taking care of kids. We're going to do the best that we can to educate them, no matter where it is, no matter how we have to do it. So that clarity of purpose remains, taking care of students and educating them. We can go ahead and jump to the next slide. So those three themes you'll see echoed in my speech tomorrow that's presented to all staff when they come back. Recent activities, I did receive an invitation to participate in the Eagle County Government Television Facebook Live presentation at the Eagle County Courthouse. I was one of four panelists, along with Kristen Pryor, who's General Manager at the Weston in Avon, Brooks Bach, who is Executive Director at Colorado Mountain Medical, Dr. Bach, and Nicole Guerrero, Representative from Vail Resorts. So our purpose in speaking was, was that?
Nadia.
Nadia, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. So our point was to speak with the commissioners and to publicly broadcast our efforts and challenges in trying to develop plans during a pandemic, so it was interesting to hear from the lodging sector, education sector, medical sector, and also recreation and Vail Resorts. So it was a good opportunity for us. I think the most exciting news I heard there was from Dr. Bach, who said that Colorado Mountain Medical was on the verge of developing some much more rapid and locally-processed COVID testing capacity, which should be happening very, very soon. So that was exciting news from Dr. Bach. Grizzly Creek Fire, as I mentioned moments ago, we are on the western edge of the highest priority forest fire in the United States at this point, from the most recent incident report that I've read. The fact that that's blocking the primary artery of east-west transportation through the Rocky Mountains has made it a very significant challenge and a high priority for firefighters. I did want you to be aware that we have worked with the incident management team and firefighters to set up camping facilities for firefighters at Eagle Valley High School in Gypsum, so they have access to locker rooms there and are camping on the baseball field, and we'll try to help them out as much as we can as they continue to amass more firefighters here. We want to help them out as much as we can with our facilities. Next, on recent activities, I have been in communication with Representative Joe Nagus. Representative Nagus is our representative for the 2nd Congressional District in Colorado in Washington, DC. He represents the eastern half of Eagle County, and we were talking to him in a conference phone call with a couple of other superintendents. I've also been in communication with Senator Donovan, who represents us in Denver. My key message to them is we are going to need some flexibility and some stability in finances for this school year. School districts across the state are going to suffer from fluctuations in enrollment that we cannot control, but we have a long-term obligation to our citizens and to our students to provide a stable organization, and if we lose a bunch of students because of enrollment changes, it's going to become increasingly difficult for us with a decreasing state budget and decreasing state-funded and decreasing enrollment for us to keep this organization as stable and solid as it has been. So I said, any flexibility they can give us in relief funds that don't have strings attached, or if there are strings attached that we put them in a reserve fund to maintain staff in the long term, that's got to be a priority in the next year. I think they heard the message. Representative Nagus is confident that there is a relief package coming, but he couldn't give too many specifics on that because obviously he's neck-deep in the debates in Washington, but I appreciated his time. And lastly, I'm working with my own kids, getting them registered for school at Berry Creek Middle School and Red Canyon High School. I completed my online annual updates. That was for Marta Ellsworth, if you're listening. Everybody get on there and get those updates so we have accurate information in Power School. It's going to be real important that we're able to contact parents urgently, immediately if we have students who exhibit any symptoms of being sick, or if we're in a remote model and we need to communicate with them about what's happening, so please make sure your enrollment process is updated online. So that's it. That's been a busy two or three weeks for me. Turn it back to you. Thank you.
Just to add that we have over half of our annual updates done.
Oh, good.
Two weeks before school is.
That's great. That's unprecedented. That's unprecedented. So 50% of our students have accurate information already in Power School, and we're still a couple of weeks out from school starting, and we'll definitely get that message out when we get kids back into school, but.
The registrations have just started.
Yeah, just started, so. Excellent news. Thank you. Okay, that's it for me. Madam President, thank you.
All right, excellent. Well, Fernando, can we start with you? Senator Almaza?
Thank you. Oh, sorry. For my update, I guess, I'm very excited to see you all in person. It's been weird, to say the least, but for an update, I think I just want to, instead of giving that, I just want to give a huge shout-out to everyone that makes this possible. I know it's hard times, and now that we get the fire going on, I do want to give a shout-out to those, our first responders giving their life out there to take care of us, so, as well as Eagle Valley High School for providing somewhere where they can sleep and make their plans and then go back at it every day. So I just want to thank you all for that, and the community for showing support and wanting to help out in any way. So stay strong, and thank you all.
Mrs. Decker?
Yes, thank you. I know it's been a trying couple of weeks and months for so many folks at this district, and appreciate all of the hard work that's been put in. A couple of updates from my end, I got to spend some time with my family the past few weeks. With school coming up, we hit the road and had some great experiences with just our family of four and limited other people. My kids are young enough that they don't have much of a choice on tagging along with us and where we go, so that was a blast. They're going into kindergarten and first grade, so just like Mr. Qualman, getting ready from our personal end for them to start the school year, and so thrilled that especially our incoming kindergartner is going to get to meet his teacher and his classmates face-to-face. Professionally and related to our work at the district, been working a lot on supporting the fifth-day learning plans, been participating in the Education and Youth Programs Task Force that the Vail Valley Foundation helped kick off, and then completed the Safe and Resilient Schools course, and really got a lot out of that experience, and very excited that the district was so encouraging for staff to participate in that. And then lastly, just something that Mr. Qualman mentioned resonated with me. I feel grateful I've been getting to read a lot of books that have got me thinking lately, and when we reset expectations and think about everything going on in the world that we don't have control over, I've been really trying to practice with myself and my family, identifying those things that we do have control over and making sure that we try to keep those in mind, because they're, you know, even during those toughest times when so much is going on out of our reach, there's still a couple of things we can direct, so been trying to keep that in mind.
I, along with everyone else, have been spending time with my family. My son just graduated and decided to take a gap year, so he was actually leaving the country at the end of the month to spend two semesters in Israel, so it's bittersweet for me. I think normally I would get to see him, but in today's world, I'm not so sure. He might leave town, and I might not see him for nine months, so I'm grappling with that. In terms of school board stuff, I did participate or got to listen to the World Academy meeting, which was now maybe a few weeks ago, but it was actually great for me to learn more about that program. And I think it's an amazing option for families that are not feeling comfortable with returning to school and that think maybe long-term that they want to do some potential at-home school-type situations, or travel, or all kinds of things. And Principal Troy Dudley is amazing. His son actually, and my son, were in playgroup together, so I've known him a long time and have a lot of respect for him. And so I think that that's a great option for families that are not feeling comfortable going back to school and want something more long-term, remote. Additionally, I was, participated in a Land Resource Committee meeting, of which we had an update today during our work session, but we're kind of continuing to move forward with trying to provide, sort of continuing down the path to figure out if we can build housing for teachers that can be affordable, and it looks like we have some amazing potential there. We're still obviously learning a lot, but we're going to continue down the path, and I'm confident and looking forward to things to come. And that is it. Again, I want to give a shout-out to everyone. I know that everyone in the district and teachers and principals are all working so hard trying to get kids back in school, and it's a monumental effort, and I've been pretty impressed with everything that's been going on. So a shout-out to everyone, and that is it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alter. Dr. Long?
Thanks, Phil, for the reminder, and I did do my updates for my three kids at the school. I understand that's more important now than really probably ever has been, because there's a good chance something's going to happen. You need to be prepared for it. I went back to work full-time last week at the college, so we've been out for four or five months, and they asked us to come back at least two days a week, but I want to go back four days or five days a week, so I'm back in the office at the college full-time. Part of that is doing a lot of dual-enrollment class coordination with Battle Mountain and Eagle Valley and the SSA. And we're putting together an exception plan for the automotive program because it's run through the college. We're trying to get an exception to go full-time, and it looks like we're going to be able to meet some of those obligations that we need to do through the college as far as PPE and all the other restrictions. I did spend a couple hours watching a CASB webinar on reopening schools, and I really, I wasn't looking forward to it because it was a long video, but I really, I feel like I learned a lot. And anybody who wants that link to watch that video, we covered reopening policies, how we need to have a governance document if we're using remote learning, what needs to be in that governance document, all these different things, and really, it was very eye-opening to me and pretty humbling because I realized I wasn't as prepared as I should have been for a lot of the things that we're doing. Talks about the difference between, you know, resolutions and policies and really a lot of things that I really needed a refresher on, and I wish I had more kind of educational moments like that with the CASB board. I did go to Eagle County Charter Academy last week for their board meeting, and they're facing a lot of the same issues that we are on a much smaller scale, and I feel like they have a strong board and strong leadership in Kim Walters, and she gave a big shout-out to you, Phil, saying that she was very just thrilled with the way that you were communicating, and your team has done the communication with the school district, and she had a lot of good things to say about the way that that whole communication bit was going. I'm also involved in a pretty exciting, and this might be a scoop for some people, we're exploring an e-sport opportunity with Battle Mountain High School and the college. We got a grant for $90,000 to make some high-powered computers through the CTE program at Battle Mountain, and then we can start our own esports team for two different types of esports games. And my son is really involved in that right now. He has been a captain of an esports team for several years, and he's kind of excited about where that might go, but more to, we haven't talked with the high school specifically about how that, what that looks like, but we're going to try to launch it this fall. So some more to come on that. I was thinking about, tomorrow's my wedding anniversary. We've been married for 20 years tomorrow, and I was thinking about, thank you very much. It's flown by, but I was thinking about some things that my kids have been doing recently and trying to, my wife and I are always, whenever you're feeling kind of beat up by circumstances, our motto is you find ways to serve. You find places that need help, and you try to help out in that way. And my sons have done that in different ways. My son Tyler, he's volunteering at Calvary Chapel. He's on the media production team. Pretty much every Sunday, he's running a camera or running the microphones, things like that. And my daughter Tori is 11, and she decided in the middle of this kind of COVID crisis that she wanted to be a mentor to kids who had trouble reading, so she's been a reading buddy all summer with one student. She's, every week she's met with him on Wednesday afternoons and tried to guide him through different books. So there's some great things my family's, my family's been doing. Ryan's been, my oldest son Ryan, just finished his driver's license online school, so sometime soon, I'm going to have to take him to the DMV and get his permit, but I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Now the fun really starts, with the permit in hand. Mrs. Jarno?
Let's see, since the last time that we met, I attended the Land Resource Committee meeting. There's a lot of exciting things going on that we heard about today in the work session, and I feel like after years and years of talking about things, there's sort of a light at the end of the tunnel, and we've made real progress towards some great solutions for housing for our teachers. I also attended CASB, their very first Equity Committee meeting, and a lot of what they're talking about currently is sort of how to be a resource for boards in terms of equity, and also how is that about the equity of districts or the equity on boards, which I think there's sort of both of those pieces, and I'm delighted that our board is more diverse and reflects our community more than it has in any of the other years that I've been on it. I also, I give out lunches, and I just wanted to give a shout-out also to Calvary Chapel. They had given bags and bags and bags of kids' school supplies, and so we were able to give those out with the lunches today, which is a huge help to some of our families. And on this, along the same lines, the United Way, because there is not the rummage sale that has gone on historically, there's a youth closet, which is behind the subway, on the same level as Subway where Taekwondo used to be, in Edwards, and you can donate any kids' clothes or toys or books there. You can just leave them right outside, there's a place to leave them, and then for those who need those school clothes and need help, they are taking appointments for people to go in and shop for their kids. So along the driver's license thing, my last child got his driver's license last Friday, turned 16 last week, and so my chauffeuring days are over, so.
That's bittersweet, too, when the chauffeuring days are over. I've been, again, like everyone, spending a lot of time with my family. I had to spend a lot of time with my daughter, and then when she finally moved down to Durango to get ready for her living-off-campus experience and beginning classes there at Fort Lewis, my son came home, so the empty nest is still just a little bit out of my grasp. I'm getting there. It's had, again, another bittersweet transition in their lives. Way back a couple of weeks ago, I was able to listen to the Spanish World Academy session, and it was done very nicely with the translation and going back and forth, and I think that information got out clearly to the people who are interested, and then the adjustments we've made in order to accommodate families who want to stay connected to their neighborhood schools, I think is going really well, and I hope that information is getting out to people that we're willing to work with you and your personal situation with your family in almost any way we can to make sure that every child has a learning experience that's going to best fit the needs of them and their family. I was invited to have some opening remarks at the New Educator Academy, which was nice, and then, of course, being the education groupie, I couldn't leave because all the new teachers. It went really well, it was one of the first events we had with people back in the rooms with the social distancing, and even though everyone was new and didn't know each other, it went pretty well, and talking to the new teachers and diving into some equity work that everyone had done before, making sure on the same page was always, always enjoyable. Got great new staff coming on, and then we had teachers. Got to give Mary Ann Stavney a shout-out for bringing students. Did I say teachers? I meant to say that brought students to talk to the teachers about what's going on. And some of the things they said, the kids break your heart because they were talking about equity and some of the experience of inequity that they experienced throughout their schooling careers, and that these four young people had been here their whole lives. But then at the same time, the things that they said about that and their optimism that equity would actually be, you know, achieved or growing more, would gave me so much hope. So that was a great balance. And they emphasized the importance of relationships with their teachers and their friends in order to have success. And then they were really sweet because they warned the new teachers about how they probably need another job, and it was like from the mouths of babes, right there. They know the reality, but they also acknowledged how hard many of their peers are working now more than ever and in the, you know, in the past and into the future, with our young people working three jobs in order to support their families because of what's going on now, so things are just tougher than ever. And then I wanted just to say again, because it was so nice to be approached by somebody who thanked us for our back-to-school plan and said we did a fine job, and it was clear and concise and well-put out, and as we said before, without the public comment, I think maybe that sentiment is being echoed, and we just want to emphasize again that it's going to be a year of flexibility and change, and if there's any problems or questions you have, you need to talk to your peers, talk to your teacher, talk to your colleague, and we'll work to make the changes, because this is untraveled ground, and we are just going to do our best to make it work, focusing on the three themes that Mr. Qualman keeps repeating. And it's nice to see everybody coming in on the same page with the messages coming in from different directions, not necessarily having been coordinated beforehand. Is there any way for the board to access some of this video stuff that's going to happen tomorrow, either at the time or at our leisure?
Absolutely, yeah. We can work with Ann Hackman and Missy Gerard, and we'll make sure you get links to those.
I don't know if anybody's interested, but maybe that'd be something to do, maybe not tomorrow morning, but while we're cooking dinner or something.
Yeah, you bet.
I think that's it. It's going fairly well with the in-person and Zoom meeting, so we, again, and then also with High Five here, recording us as usual, and going to have the video posted, so there should be plenty of opportunity for anybody who wants to know what we're talking about to get the information. We want to maintain our high level of community input and interest in the work we're doing because we don't do it alone. We don't want to work in a vacuum. We want to know what people are thinking. So thank you, everyone who's listening and had been participating. All right, old and new business. We're going to discuss superintendent goals in the executive session as we do on a regular basis, just to keep things, make sure our lines of communication are open. We'll get an update on the Facility Master Plan, which we had an update on the Housing Master Plan today. Again, with the COVID planning update, we're going to keep with that. Mountain Family MOU, the school-based health clinics, which is going to be more important than ever. School Health Provider Grant, resolution for the November ballot. We're just going to be talking about it now and decide what we're going to do, have some time to think about it and make that final decision next meeting. And then approval for 3A auditor and procedures. Does anyone have any specific questions about any of these items that we need to have some research done over the next two weeks, or any other items that need to be added to the agenda for next time? Okay, and do you know where to reach us if you have any questions or anything comes up between now and the next meeting? So first item of business will be the approval of some guidance we received from our lawyers on a 1995 intergovernmental agreement with Mountain Rec and the Town of Eagle. Do you want to start? Mr. Qualman, would this a little background or just we jump into our comments?
Sure, I can I can provide some background. Sandy, did you want to speak to this, too?
Not too much background. This has been something we've been discussing for a while, but.
Yeah, this has been on our agenda. But yeah, I think that we're making some progress with the Town of Eagle in figuring out how to adjust that IGA specifically in regard to the noon ball program at Eagle Valley Middle School. So in consultation with with attorneys, we've got some guidance on how to move forward with that. I think of key importance, we want to maintain a positive working relationship with the Town of Eagle. We've always enjoyed that. And having our schools within town limits and those facilities available to Town Rec Leagues and Mountain Rec are important. We want to maintain that that relationship. But we also have to be mindful of of safety and what kind of protocols are we establishing in our schools to ensure that we don't have any any opportunities that would be easy to exploit. So we'll continue to work with them on that, and I think we have some good direction from from legal on how to pursue that.
Right, that was an excellent summary. Thank you very much, Superintendent Qualman. If there's any board members who have any comments that want to just emphasize or echo any of those points, and then this is a an action item to direct the staff to move forward.
I'll just echo Mr. Qualman, our relationship with our partners down at the Town of Eagle as well as Mountain Recreation. They were a big partner in the agreement as well initially. It's really important to us, and we trust that we'll come to a place where we can preserve those partnerships to continue to serve young people and the community the best that we can, keeping in mind how important student safety is to us as well as other guidelines. And at this point, we really trust our our district leadership to move forward with that process.
I think that's been very well said, and we appreciate all of our community partners. So I move to direct the Eagle County School District staff to initiate communication with the Town of Eagle to discuss possibilities for the resolution of the 1995 intergovernmental agreement per the direction provided in our legal counsel and executive session.
I'll second.
Are there further comments or discussion from the board? Excellent. Thank you very much. Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Now we got Technology Wizards. We got Missy's microphone working. So then the next business and operations item here is approval of a lease with EFAC. And Ms. Musser?
Yeah, good evening. What you have on the agenda tonight is approval of a lease agreement with EFAC, which is a nonprofit organization that partners with Eagle County Schools. And they're looking for a classroom space at the second floor of the new Edwards Early Learning Center and be able to work closely with us by using that space. The lease provides terms where it's done annually, but can be renewed again for as long as the district and EFAC agree to that. And the rent would be $500 a month. As part of that, we provide the the furnitures, fixtures and equipment. They would have access to district Wi-Fi. We would clean the space for them on a regular basis and provide any maintenance that needs to be done to the building. I think the the biggest section that would be new in this lease compared to other leases that we have is Section 10, where it talks about complying with laws, rules and regulations. And 10.1 goes into the security piece of that, where people would be expected to, all EFAC board members and employees would have to go through the background check and be able to have access to the location because of the students that are in that building. And then they would be required to escort any visitors from the office up to their office on the second floor, on the way in, on the way out, and anywhere else in the building except for the restroom. But they EFAC has agreed to all of that. They'll have to provide their own insurance and believe that this is provides a good opportunity to continue the partnership with this organization and would recommend approval of it.
Well, I appreciate you thinking through some of those protection and safety measures. To me, this seems like a no brainer. If we've got the space available, EFAC's been such an incredible partner for the district over the years with the advocacy that they provide and other benefits that they offer for our teachers and our district. So this sounds like a great opportunity.
I'll move to approve the lease agreement with EFAC.
One second. Further questions or discussion?
If I'm on their board, can I still vote?
That's an interesting question. Is there a conflict of interest?
Sorry, what? If I'm on their board, can I still vote? One, two, three, four. It would still leave a quarm if you both recused yourself from voting. And since you both sit on that board and this board, it is wise for you to do so. Just when it come to your name, just state the reason why. But the other members must agree to that as well, if that's okay with them, for you guys to recuse yourself from from voting.
We're so used to being with our mics on. Thumbs up, we all agree. Okay, then we have motion. Do we have a second? Second by Michelle, and then we'll take the vote.
Okay. Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
I'm going to recuse myself from the vote because I sit on the EFAC board.
Thank you. Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
I also would like to recuse myself because I am also a board member of EFAC.
Thank you. Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. All right, so we made a slight adjustment to our agenda, and we will now, since we're at public items for public interest items, we will hop back to the 3A renewal discussion, which Superintendent Qualman will read us through.
Thank you, Madam President. As most of you are aware, the 3A mill levy override that passed in 2016 has a sunset to expire in 2023. In this time of of global pandemic and economic recession, we think it's very important that we push for stability in our budgeting process, meaning we would like to renew the 2016 3A mill levy override as soon as possible so that we can count on those dollars for our long term budgeting needs. So to that end, in your packet, you can see the language that is being proposed. I do want you to be aware that the the language that's quoted in the board packet was vetted by Bill Ray, who is a political advisor that we have worked with, Lori Weigel, who is a pollster and political advisor. District Leadership Team also looked at it, and EFAC was instrumental in reviewing that language as well. It was edited many times, and we think that the language that you're seeing there reflects the the elements that our community values and that we think have the the best chance of of renewal. Just in the last two days, I've spoken with Lori Weigel, who runs Newbridge Strategy, and she conducted a recent poll for Eagle County Government. We were able to piggyback on that poll and add a question about this language because we had surveyed in February, as you recall, and our our survey support in February, pre pre COVID, was was excellent. We had 73% of those polled say that they would vote, vote yes to support renewing the the mill levy override. But obviously, the world changed in March, so we thought it was wise to see if we could ask the question again. So she conducted a poll, again, for Eagle County Government. We got a question in there, though, and with with about 350 respondents, Eagle County is still polling very strong. We did see the the overall support for the renewal drop a few points from 73 down to 66%. But I think that reflects all the turmoil in the district through March, April, May, and a and a summer of uncertainty about how we will be coming back into school. So again, that was conducted before we made our announcement on Monday. But I think we've seen continued support throughout the county. It's it's strong in both parties. It's strong for both genders, and it's it's strong in in each municipality up and down the valley. So she feels like we we still have very strong and consistent support through the community and feels like it's it's the right time. The one concern that she has, and Bill Ray has expressed this, too, and I totally understand, is the 2020 ballot looks to be quite crowded. There will probably be at least nine, maybe 10 state initiatives on this ballot, not to mention federal presidential elections and its special district. So it could be a multi-page ballot, which can be very dense language. It can be challenging to to get through that whole thing, and what we're fearful of is voter fatigue. So we really need to get messaging out that this is it's going to be a long ballot and prepare yourself to sit down and take some time to go over each question and make sure you you find that Eagle County School District question on that ballot and and don't let that one get lost. We might even consider starting with the local initiatives on the back and working your way forward.
To the fun part.
Yeah, to the fun part. So to the interesting parts as you get into the federal election. So that's a concern, but we can certainly message that, and EFAC is ready to start ramping up efforts to to lead that campaign. So at this point, I just wanted you to see that language, understand that we're still polling 66% in the district in support of renewal of the mill. So we're confident getting that on. And at our next meeting on the 28th, we would vote to finalize this language. So if you have any questions about what you saw in the board packet for the the question, I'm happy to to take those questions and and comments now and reflect on that language.
At the risk of bringing this to anyone's attention, does this essentially remove the sunset?
It would. It would remove the sunset, yes. The other change is is that it would change the oversight. So the original, the original 3A created an oversight committee that that we would run and organize, but we would like to transition that to a third party auditor. That saves us time and capacity, but still gives us an objective opinion as to whether or not we're spending these dollars in the way that the public has intended. And the results of that third party audit would certainly be made public, accessible through our website.
And I guess the really important part of this to emphasize is the long range budget planning that we'll have here. If anyone was watching any of our budget presentations from before, after 2023, the line item for 3A has been is blanked out, and it has significant impact on on the budget and future implications. And so it's really important. This money is getting used. It's going directly to classrooms, attract and retain quality teachers, mental health counseling, art, music, technology, PE, curriculum, technology, all of that stuff that's is critical, and it will continue to be so, especially in the face of budget cuts on other levels. So our local funding to have that be maintained is is super important. And hopefully, we can just get this done, tick in one year, and we can just continue to thank our community every year as as we have been and as we will into the future because we, as I said, we can't do it alone.
Well, I guess I would say, too, that we seem to be lacking success at a state level to be creating any sort of solutions to our funding problems. So we definitely need to look at it as a local, you know, issue and and some local solutions, and that this was incredibly important and will be incredibly important in the future. And like I said, it does not appear that anything at the state level is going to happen. Unfortunately, Fair Tax Colorado is not making it to the ballot, so makes that this much more important.
Any comments or concerns about the actual language? I really like how how simple it is and easy to read lots of times about language is ponderous. And the worst part is just how it's printed in the font, quite frankly, on the ballot, all caps, hard to read. But it's even harder to read when it's really convoluted legalese, and this is some of the most clear and concise ballot language I've ever seen. And so I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and the the input we've had from professionals in the ballot in the ballot world. But if anybody else have any concerns or anything we need to tweak before we make it?
I just think it's great news that it would replace the sunset and that we don't have to call that out specifically, that this is a forever type of thing. It's great.
So this just is information and discussion. If there's any other questions, we have plenty of time to continue, and we'll have time to revisit it one last time before a vote at the last meeting in August. We're all good? All righty. So COVID-19 planning update. We were able to work through some of this in the work session, but let's head it again for the for the public and for the camera.
Indeed, so this will be an abbreviated version of what we shared in detail. So for members of the team, know that we're kind of covering the 10,000 foot elevation on this one. So I'm sure everybody's aware at this point, we did get our final decision on Monday based on the local key performance indicators, that the prevalence of COVID, the severity, has been on decline in Eagle County, which we're very excited to to say leads us to some modified in-person instruction. So we'll be looking at a four day school week for elementary through middle school, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Wednesday would be a remote learning day for them. We also have some fifth day options available that Melissa Reewalt threw on will will share with us in just a minute. And then for our high school and for VSSA, Battle Mountain Eagle Valley, they'll be on a hybrid schedule utilizing a flipped classroom model. So two days a week of of in-person instruction while they're at school, two days a week of of very scripted, independent learning through online resources. And then Wednesday would again be a remote check-in day, a remote learning day that they can work more independently. Also, I think the county public health would appreciate if we acknowledged that even though we did dip into the yellow, this is not the time to to become lackadaisical about how we are monitoring our our mask usage or or our social distancing. We're all sitting in this room together, six feet apart, wearing our masks, and we need the community to continue to follow that guidance. We want to stay in school. You know, it's important for for our teachers and our students, and we understand the importance of that for the whole community. So in order for us to do that, we need to keep pushing that meter down, 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 eventually getting back into the green, and we can get back to business as usual. So let's continue to be vigilant, I think, is the key takeaway from that. We can't think that now that we're in the yellow, it's it's time to throw off the masks and start hugging people and having big parties. Second point to point out is emphasizing the social, emotional wellness in 2021 and focusing on ma- making sure that when kids come back into schools, we do want parents and and teachers and students to recognize that that is a big priority for us. We've spent summertime training in how to make school, make sure that our schools are safe and resilient. And we have lots of professional development opportunities in the next two weeks to train our our staff, teachers, what to be watching for, what to be on the lookout for, and making sure that we're taking care of kids' hearts so that we can inspire their minds. Next one for me is an update on the Restart Toolkit. This is a document that we've created with our principals, and it's a it's a comprehensive list of all the elements that they need to be planning for in their schools. It's exhaustive. I mean, it's there's there's it's 56 pages at this point, and it's we've still got two weeks to finalize it, so it's it's going to be a big document. So it it helps them make sure that they know exactly what to think about in their planning. We've also invited teachers to be present at the table as we draft this document. I think it's important to recognize that the ideas that teachers bring are are critical and that their voice is valued in this process. So we've been able to compensate them for time over the summer that they've been able to commit to to help principals develop these plans. Ultimately, the the schools are putting some of their protocols into the document, which then serves as a warehouse of ideas for other principals. So they've been inspired by reading what what some of their colleagues are doing, and it's helping them and their their individual school team solve some problems. So that toolkit's a big part of our come back to school plan. Last part for me is to update on personal protective equipment or PPE. We made our first deliveries on Monday to schools, providing PPE for staff, so face masks, neck buffs, thermometers for each classroom. But we have we have tons more to get delivered to schools for students. for students. So this is more face masks, hand sanitizers, surgical gloves, and 95 masks. So we've got boxes and boxes of boxes. So appreciate Amy Kijorski working with public health, making sure that all those orders were made in a timely fashion so that we are ready to start the school year with all these things in place. So thank you for her efforts on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jarno. Dr. Katie Jarno, can you give us an update on sports and activities?
Yes. The Colorado High School Activities Association, or CHASA, released their guidance for this year, and the seasons for sports for the year have been kind of changed around a little bit. The fall season will consist of cross-country, boys golf, boys tennis, and softball. All of the other sports have been divided into three different seasons. Season B starts in January, Season C starts in February, and Season D starts in April. Other activities, after-school clubs and activities can proceed, following the local guidelines in terms of social distancing and mask-wearing and all of that. The middle schools will also be following all of the CHASA guidance. We are allowed to have off-season practices for sports that are not in season, and we'll be doing that at both the high school and middle school level. And we will be following the off-season guidance that we created over the summer for the off-season practices over the summer. That's it.
Thanks, Dr. Jarno. Next, could you give us an update on what that fifth-day academic requirement is going to look like for our students on Wednesdays?
Yes. So although our students at the high school are in a hybrid model, and our students at the middle and elementary schools are attending in-person teaching four days a week, we are not a four-day-a-week district. The majority of districts in the state of Colorado do a four-day school week. And what that means is that on the fifth day, teachers are not in contract, students are not available, nobody's there the fifth day. We're not doing that. We are a five-day-a-week school district, even though students at middle and elementary will be doing one day a week of remote learning, and at the high school they'll be doing three days. But that will look different. So in order to help the school districts in this position, the state has offered guidance about what that fifth day can look like. So we do have to take attendance on the fifth day, but that is not a classic attendance that you might think of. There are lots of different ways that we can show that kids are engaged in learning. So it can be assignments that are completed at home, logging into online learning platforms like Schoolagi or Edgenuity or any of the digital resources that we have. It can be a student demonstration of learning. So anything that students demonstrate that they've done some learning on that fifth day. It can be responding to teacher emails, meeting with teachers for office hours. So it's pretty broad. We'll also be working with our community partners, who are helping us to provide activities and enrichments for students on the fifth day, and be working with them to do some assignments, if you will, or lesson plans during those days that will also count toward that seat time. The state does require a certain number of hours for secondary. It's a little bit less for elementary, and we do have to meet those hours. If we were a true four-day-a-week district, we would have a waiver of those hours, and the hours would be reduced. But we would not have that fifth day. And the fifth day is extremely important to our teachers and our staff in order for planning, for meetings, for professional development. So it's important that we keep that fifth day. We just have to make sure that we are taking attendance on that fifth day.
Thanks, Dr. Jarno. I think an extension of that is what we're able to offer on fifth days through some of our community partnerships, and that as we work with our community partners, any of the activities that we provide can also be counted towards those attendance requirements for CDE. So to echo your point, there are lots of ways that we can count kids as still being engaged in school on Wednesdays, so we don't need to get too nervous about that. So turn it over to Melissa Reewald-Duon. She's going to give us more detail about what we can expect on those Wednesdays. Melissa?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to start off by thanking all of our community partners that have come out to offer services for fifth day. We're still in the planning process for that. Currently, we have a fifth-day task force that has been meeting weekly for the last several weeks, month or month or so, in preparation that we could go back on a four-day week, well, five-day school week, but four-day week of contact time with students. And I'd like to thank Sarah Johnson from Vale Valley Foundation, EPR 365, for facilitating those right now, while we're super busy trying to get everything else organized to start the first few days of school. So fifth day, in a lot of places, is really considered an augment to the regular school day, not just a day to fill in time. In the fifth-day plan, right now, we've got 13 different organizations that have already submitted plans for possible fifth-day activities to happen. We have sent out a survey to elementary parents at this point. We have 400 survey results back. And of those survey results, of the English-speaking families, almost 60% had said that they would need some sort of activities for their kids to do on Wednesdays. And we have 48% of Spanish-speaking families. Those activities range from all-day activities to part-day activities or to enrichments that could happen in a remote environment. Sorry, it's hard to breathe in my mask right now. I'm trying to breathe and talk at the same time. Of those families that were surveyed, the number-one response of what they would like in those days was an all-day enrichment activity, so that would follow the regular school day schedule, to give their kids more experiences. The second most popular response was all-day extended childcare-type program, so what you might do in a day camp during the summer. And also, those remote providers, those auxiliary providers in the community have said that they would really work with students for anything that they would need to do academically on that day, and make sure that they were able to sign in. Of the families surveyed, 80% of the English-speaking families reported that they could pay some sort of a fee towards those fifth-day activities, and about 10% of the Spanish-speaking families. We also interviewed, asked families in the questionnaire about their need for transportation. And out of the 400 responses, it came back that about 17, let's see, 25 kids total may need transportation for those activities on those fifth days. So we're very excited to continue the planning. We have another task committee meeting tomorrow to go over more details of how these plans will play out. Right now, we're not anticipating that these would start in the first couple of weeks of school, just to give families opportunities and for us to get our school schedules in place and make sure that we're able to maintain safe environments. We do have a few organizations that have, we've already given them permission to use our buildings for schools' out-day camp sort of activities, or if the case, we ended up going remote, to be able to offer some families the opportunity for a situation where they could work, and their children could still work in the remote environment, but in a building with a provider.
Melissa, thank you. I think the I have been overwhelmed in the last week at how willing our community partners have been to jump in and help us with this option. Since we announced four-day-a-week, they came to us and said, hey, I think we can help you with the fifth day. Like, can we get together and organize this in a cooperative, collaborative way? So again, thanks to Sarah Johnson, and thanks to you for bringing those folks together. It's heartening to know that we are such a community, that all these organizations are willing to come to our assistance and help families out and help us out. So thanks to them.
Does that bring us to the end?
That's it for our update.
We had educator professional development in the earlier one, which is happening in revised format, but in just as much or more quantity and need than ever before, getting everybody lined up for the flipped classroom and the technology changes. And everyone's much more dependent on tech. We wouldn't be able to do it without the IT team. I'm not sure we've thanked you guys today. We should thank them every day. So thank you very much to our tech team. Let's see. We have a couple more items of business here, important things to take care of. A resolution here, Dr. Jarno, if you want to introduce it for us?
Sure. So last spring, when the entire state was on a stay-at-home order, and we moved to remote learning for all districts in the state, the Department of Education did a blanket waiver for the seat time, which I just spoke about in the fifth-day piece. However, for this fall, what they've done instead is they've asked for school districts to pass a resolution that would change the school district policy on attendance, which for us is policy IC and ICA, which is the school year calendar and instruction time, as well as IHA, which is the basic instructional program, so that those policies for this year, and is a resolution just for the 2021 school year, would include instruction delivered electronically and the use of other types of independent remote work time for students provided under the supervision of a certified licensed teacher. So what that means is that attendance would be recorded at least once a day for students, whether in person or remotely. And I just spoke about how that attendance looks different from what you think of as classical attendance. And then the remote learning days, in the resolution, it describes the remote learning days as having synchronous, asynchronous. The resolution describes all of the different tech pieces that we have, including Schoolagi, Google Meet, Edgenuity, all of those pieces, that allow for certain students to learn the same academic content as they would have under the in-person bell schedule. So the resolution is sort of expanding our definition of what instruction means and what attendance means. And the Department of Education provided those pieces that I went through earlier about how to reach that attendance. It can be assignments, logging into an online platform, all of those different pieces. And so the resolution that you have simply expands those policies to include instruction delivered electronically and the use of other types of independent remote work time for students provided under the supervision of a certified licensed teacher. So I would ask that you pass that resolution in order to expand our definitions on those policies. And again, that would be for this year only. We would have to revisit this if we're in the same position next year.
I was going to move to approve Resolution 2020-21-3 to define actively engaged in the educational process and student attendance for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second. Further comments or questions on this item?
I'm sorry. I just have one question. Should we move back to the green? We don't need to do anything, correct? This is adding to the previous definition of attendance. Okay, thank you.
I love that optimism. When we move back to the green, this will just be superfluous, and the other policies are staying in place. We're just adding the definition. And it's very clear that it's just for this school year. We want to take the step-by-step. We're not making any radical changes for the whole future, but just to cover ourselves with this. And any other comments or questions? Missy?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Almonte?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Then so, again, I believe Dr. Jarno has another resolution to help us navigate this tricky year?
Indeed. So the second resolution is to define our graduation requirements, again, just for the 2021 school year. So this would only affect the class of 2021. And what we're asking is that we reduce the total number of credits necessary for graduation from 25 to 24. In the state of Colorado, local school boards determine with a minimum of 22 credits, local school boards determine how many credits are needed for graduation. And we are obviously well above the 22-credit bottom of that. The credit is obviously the amount of credit that's received when a student successfully completes a class. And what we would do is we would remove one credit from the choice category or basically the electives. So all of the math, English, science, social studies, all of those requirements would stay in place. Foreign language, all of those are still in place. It would just be reducing the electives by one. And the reason for this is because with the hybrid schedule, it may be a problem for some students to get the number of electives that they need. Elective classes tend to be smaller group sizes. I know that in some of our high schools, certain electives are only being offered on certain days. And so if a student isn't able or isn't in the cohort that's meeting on that day and isn't able to additionally meet on that day, that could be a problem for them. And we wouldn't want for any seniors to not be able to graduate as a result of the schedule. It's through no fault of their own. They didn't fail any classes. It's simply a scheduling issue. And so, again, this is just for this year, and just would reduce that number. Separate from this resolution, but I think it is important to note, the Department of Education instituted some college-and-career-ready demonstrations that were put into place for the class of 2021. And those, we've known were coming for about five years. We've been planning for it. And what those demonstrations are, are a certain score that a student needs to get on the SAT, or the ACT, or the ASVAB, or the Accuplacer. They can prove that college readiness through a capstone project or industry certifications, AP tests are a part of that. The Department of Education has suspended those requirements for this year, again, because things are unusual. It's a little up in the air, and so they have pushed those back. And so the Department of Education is recognizing that we need to make some changes for this year, and there might be some things that we were hoping were possible that aren't going to be possible. And so not only are we already above the minimum number of credits, but the CDE has given their additional blessing for school districts to make changes to the number of credits if they need. So I would ask that the resolution to define graduation requirements for the 2021 school year, that you pass that, and it would reduce the number of credits from 25 to 24.
I just had one question, Dr. Jarno. The chart that's on the resolution, I'm not sure which page it is, but a couple pages in, that talks about standard credit requirements and college requirements. Are those specific to our district, or do they kind of align with state or?
Those are specific to our district. The only class that is required by the state of Colorado by legislation is a civics class, and even that doesn't have to be a separate class. It can be incorporated into other classes, as long as you're meeting the standards. So this, in Colorado, the Department of Education is pretty hands-off when it comes to most graduation requirements.
This is an action item. Are there further questions or concerns? This is just a temporary reduction?
This is just a temporary reduction because of scheduling concerns with the new reality? Further questions?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2020-21-4 to define graduation requirements for the 2020-2021 school year.
One second.
Excellent. Second for Mr. Almonte. And further comments or questions?
Okay. Mr. Almonte?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
All right. Well, I think a lot of us might have lost a little sleep over this first in-person meeting and the anticipation of the school year starting, and I think we're to the end of the agenda here. Everything else that I have here has been approved on consent. Some of these items, we're going to come back to because there's some quarterly reports, some fiscal monitoring that is not completed because of the way things working. And then the personnel list, I actually noted that we also want to call out HR and all the schools and the staff and some of the juggling they've done. Have anyone looked at the list of transfers on here? And that's remarkable. We're definitely doing some juggling around to make this new model work for everybody, and we sure appreciate the work that's gone in on the backside to get all the teachers placed in the comfortable positions and get these schools running in this never-before-done Just thank you to Dr. Long and Shelley for their participation in the CASB webinars, and they're available to us all, if anyone has time. And there's been some emails from NASB, there'll be some webinars, I'm not sure what the fee structure and all that's going to be. I'm looking over at Missy a little bit, but there is opportunity for us to continue our learning and education right here on our little computers, if we're so inclined. So as you said, it was very worth the time. You didn't think it would be, and it was. Those are my two other comments that came up while I was thinking of the meeting. Anybody else? It brings us to evaluate the decisions of the board meeting in terms of governance policies. I think we did some nice adjustments to our policies to reflect our current situation, advancing the goals and mission of the district. We're getting kids back in buildings and focusing on hearts and minds and equity and MTSS. That's what we got to do. And did this impact, meaning impact student learning? I think it will. We're moving forward. By the next time we'll meet, kids will have been in school a couple days, and that'll be exciting. What we didn't decide was, we were having, it seems to me that everything is getting more polarized, even within your own heart sometimes, the way you feel about things. There's two sides to every story, you know? The disparities between rich and poor are getting pushed. And how do we, as board members, want to support schools opening? We want to, we're saying that we're discouraging people from coming to schools extra, but we also want to show as board members that we want to be there and support and say that we, you know, it's a safe place to be and our kids can be there. So do we land on anywhere on what we should be doing?
We have that on our agenda to discuss Friday afternoon with principals. So we really want their input on that, because they have the protocols in their buildings about visitors and trying to maintain cohorts and all that. So before we made a decision about that as a DLT, we really wanted principal input. So we'll learn more about that on Friday and be able to communicate that to you after that.
Excellent. And this is one thing that I really appreciate about your leadership, Superintendent Qualman, is that when it comes to a question of this, you know, order, we need to go down and before we come up with an answer, talk to the principals, the people whose buildings were really going to be affected. But the short story is that the board here is supporting the work that we're doing, that we want to make sure that our staff and our students are feeling safe and cared for and are in the buildings learning, and we'll do whatever it takes to make sure that they feel that way, even if that means staying home and waving to the kids on the bus. And if it means getting in there and doing something else, then you just let us know, because...
I'll make sure to convey that to them on Friday.
We won't take it personal if they say, stay away, but if they say, come, we need you...
I do take that personally when they tell me that, but I understand your point.
You know, if they need us to be manning thermometers, you just let us know what we can do, because I think that everybody feels that way. According to our own personal schedules, some of us are getting back in the office five days a week, some of us never get any chance to sleep. Anyone else have something, last closing comment that they want to make? I'm just glad we're all here back in the room. It does, really does feel different, and it's nice to see the whites of everybody's eyes, if I can't see the whites of your teeth.
Or the reds.
All right, and I'm going to bring the gavel back next time. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.